Thanks for all of you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Now, we got two minutes yet.[7.21][7.21](Laughter).[8.21][8.21](Laughter).
I move we start anyway.[11.33][11.33](Laughter).
All right. Hearing that, I'll call the meeting of the West Dakota Water Development District to, for our March ninth meeting to order. And the first item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.[27.11][27.11](Applause).
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.[44.57][44.57](Applause).
Next item is a roll call. Dan?
A roll call. Cole?
I'm here.
Jerky?
Here.
Driscoll?
Here.
McGregor?
Here.
Nodigle?
Here.
Row.
Here.
Matt?
Here.
Fleming?
Here.
Harris?
Here.
All present, we have a call.
All right, thank you. Next item is approval of tonight's agenda. I think, Dan, I think there's a couple additions you're gonna...
Well, I had one addition would be to, to add approval for a letter of support for a proposal from the Pennington Conservation District. I'd sent the wording on that, Dan Malley, earlier.
Right, okay. Any objections from board members adding that item? We'll add it towards...
Probably as 11A.
11?
I think that's headed before housekeeping stuff.
Okay, we'll put that in as 11A.
Could you restate that, the item again?
Approval for a letter of support for Pennington Conservation District CIS proposal.
Is that the only item?
Yeah, that other thing was, that Dan had mentioned is kind of a bit of confusion.
Okay, forget that.
It will be part of another item.
Just one item then, all right? Anything else from any other board members?
Moved to approve.
Moved by Dan Driscoll to approve. Is there a second? Second. Second by Scott. All in favor of the motion? Excuse me, is there any discussion? All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign. Motion carries. Next item is approval of the minutes from the January eighth meeting. Does anybody have a chance to look at the minutes? Any additions, corrections?
I'd move their approval, Mr. Chair.
Moved by Scott to approve. Is there a second to the motion? Second by Wendy.
Please.
Discussion. Seeing none, all in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign. Motion carries. Item number five is conflict of interest disclosure. Are there any items on the agenda this evening that any board members would have like conflict of interest? If so, please say so now. All right, seeing none, we'll move on to the treasurer's report. Dan?
Currently, we have almost 555,000 C Ds in our accounts. They're now going to include checking, savings, a 12-month C D, and a 24-month C D. So that's essentially funds on hand. If we did have to use those CDs, we would lose six months' interest, but we're past the six months, so we wouldn't really be behind from what we started with the principal. Just a note, the 12-month C D matures May 28th, so maybe our next meeting we'll have to have a discussion on.
Okay.
If we want to roll that over.
Chair.
Appropriations spent to date are about $10,800, and project expenditures to date are about $32,000. We've had, I paid U.S. Dream Page invoice for last year, but they bill at the end of the period, so that ended up on this year's account. We have a check for School of Mines in previous areas, or the, I'm sorry, the total payment is about $8,500, and we may be getting another check on that. I'm not sure if they're done with that or not. Latest invoice, that final invoice, but they haven't used up all the money. And then Banner, we paid a $7,800 invoice on that, and for the School of Mines re-vegetation, they haven't filled us too much, that's $316,000. So total project is expenditures, I'm a trouble reading it myself, it's about $32,000. As getting into the projects themselves, maybe I can help if I do a little bit. Chairman Biurkey brought up something that was omitted from this, but let me just go down the list first. The Trinity, that's closed off. The previous areas, they have yet approved them off, a $3,900 approximately left. All right, USGS, I think we're gonna probably get an invoice in June for the Canyon Lake for $18,000, and the soil, revegetation, revegetation exposed soils at School of Mines, they've only built a little bit, so we've got about $24,500 left on that. And Banner, this is the one that I need to, if the motion took their task one and then added on to that, I think it was an amount not to exceed $5,000 for the attorney, so to be safe, we should probably add another $5,000 into $66,000. So that would then ripple through to the, I've got unpaid project obligations of $237,648, so really probably add another $5,000 to that. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Any questions from board members on the treasurer's report? Tonight, we entertain a motion for approval.
Moved to approve.
Moved by Tom. Is there a second to the motion?
Oh, second.
Seconded by Cheryl. Discussion. Seeing none, all in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign. Motion carries.[475.83][475.83](Applause). Before we get into our presentations here, a couple reminders. If you haven't had a chance to sign in here, we do have a sign-up seat over there, over there on the podium over there. And then also, if we're going to speak to the board, we'd ask you to come up to the podium up here and speak into the mic, because the acoustics isn't very good, and you have a tough time hearing it, doing the minutes. So if you do that, we appreciate it.
Restrooms?
Oh, and the restrooms. God, there is restroom right back here. There's a sign there, so. Okay, item seven, update from Banner on our Task One progress for the Missouri Water Needs Assessment. And Cheryl Chapman is trying to get it started, anyway.
Yes, good evening, and, and thank you for asking us to come over and provide an update. As you may know, we have continued to meet with a subcommittee of you on a monthly basis, as we did throughout last year, and it's very helpful to us, and I hope to you too, to keep up to date on what is happening with our project. I would like to introduce this evening Dennis Odens, who is our project manager for the needs assessment that was approved in December, and he will tell you a little bit of his background. We're very excited to have him lead this effort for us, and I've asked him to tell a little bit about his background, as well as give you the update. So, thank you.
Thank you. My name is Dennis Odens, as Cheryl said. Background, I guess I graduated from SDSU in 1980. The first six years, I was in the Rapid City office for Banner. Then I moved to Illinois for a few years, and then Banner hired me back in 91, and I've been working with Banner for several years. It'll be 35 coming up soon. So, that's, that's my background. As far as related to the project, the Missouri River project, I've also been working on the Lewis and Clark project since 91, worked through the assisted, and it wasn't just me, there were several staff that worked on that, and, you know, worked on the preliminary engineering report, took it through funding. I went to Washington, D.C. on one occasion at least, there's others in our firm that went more often than I did. So we've, we've had experience, and before Lewis and Clark, we had the project called the Shoshone Project in Wyoming, and we did that project as well. And we also are working on the Mini Wash Day project. So we've had several large projects like this one that's being contemplated. As far as an update on the project, the first thing we did is we went to the DNR website and started downloading the information that we could get on the rural water systems, on the municipalities, so we, we had a base for what systems are West River, how many connections they had, what kind of water quality they had, things like that. And then that was the base, and then we also gained contact information from there on who we could contact for the calls. Following that, and we're still updating all of that, because there's a lot of systems, there's a lot of data to collect. But then we also started calling rural water systems and stakeholders and municipalities, and following the call, we sent out a packet, and that packet included a report that we did for you, plus a questionnaire, and I have copies of the questionnaire if you would like copies. We'll just give them to Dan here, and you can pass them down the row. That's the questionnaire that's going out. And, and part of it, part of that questionnaire is, we want to know what their system, what their usage is, what they're doing now, but then the second part of it is, is what are they gonna ask for? How much are they gonna need? Because there's gonna be some communities that say, you know, we've got a good water source, we aren't gonna need water. There's others that are gonna say, we need, 25% of our water needs to come from another source. Others are gonna say 100%, and we're, we're gonna try and get, you know, the interest where the needs are, and, you know, then package that all up, summarize it, and that'll be our Task One that we're under contract with you for. We also, Cheryl also presented at the Black Hills Association of County Commissioners and handed out some brochures and information there. What we're trying to do is get as much or as many people involved in the project, letting them be aware of what's going on. There are a lot of systems out there. One of the things that aren't as connected and they're harder to contact is all of the little homeowner associations. You know, they might be 100 homes, it might be 200 homes, it might be 30 homes. But there's a lot of water systems that are out there that are going to be looking for water, and, you know, they're gonna have to declare, you know, what their needs are. My concern, and I think what's gonna drive the timetable on this, is we're gonna send the questionnaire out, they're gonna look at it, and they're gonna say, we can't answer these questions, and then they're gonna wanna look for an outside source to assist them in answering the questions. And if they go through a procurement to, you know, hire an engineer or whatever, that's gonna take time. And, you know, we, we do need to get as much data as we can, but I think our schedule, as far as summarizing all of this, is gonna be kinda dictated by what we get back from the constituents. We need to know, and this is the very first basic step, we need to know what the needs are out there, and that's why it's the needs assessment. So I'm open to any questions, and Cheryl can assist, she's been working with you longer than I have.
Cheryl, you, you mentioned how many small community systems are in Pennington County. I forgot the number. What was that number?
It was, I believe, 146 separate systems.
Just in Pen, in our, in our...
Just in Pennington County.
Right. And then our other, you know, many of our Black Hills counties have a lot, you know, and some 60, 40, you know, just a number of them. And so, you know, it feels, some days that we pull on that string, and all, all kinds of new information comes out for our consideration, so.
I thought that was interesting, that, that many in Pennington County, and a lot is, is a lot.
Cheryl, were you also counting non-residential water systems like campgrounds and tourist attractions?
Yes, we did.
Okay. Because I think there's about 66 regulated public water supplies that are residential.
Oh, okay, 66.
In Pennington County.
Okay. Good information.
Yeah, yeah, and you're right, you know, camp, whether it's a campground or other standalone facility, you know, what we...
They need water, too.
You know, yes, exactly.
Has this gone out now?
The questionnaire has gone out to not everyone, to some, because we're, we're trying to contact them first, because if we just do a blast, I think what's gonna happen is they're gonna look at it, we have no, no idea, and they're gonna drop it in the trash can.
Yeah.
And that's not what we need. We need them...
What's the geographic area of coverage?
Western South Dakota, west of the Missouri River. And, you know, because we've got to establish the need. Once we know what the needs are, then we can start taking the next step. How are we gonna meet it?
One thing I noticed missing here, other than just presenting the treatment process, was their assessment of their water quality. Good, bad, poor, indifferent. Our quantity's okay, but our quality sucks, so we'd like to get a different source.
Well, we know that. In order to be a water supply, they have to meet EPA standards. Now, whether they have other constituents in their water, that is not too desirable. You're right, it could be hard water, it could be, yeah, poor tasting, that sort of thing.
Poor taste, that sort of thing.
And, you know, and the reality of it is, is they have to declare to us what they want, you know. And I think that, I guess my experience with Lewis and Clark is, is there are several systems that once Lewis and Clark got there, they became 100% reliant on Lewis and Clark, because it was, the quality of water was much better.
It was so much better.
And you were saying too, Dennis, that the price of the water actually was a very competitive price.
Right.
Yeah, so.
Yeah. Sioux Falls made, you know, when, when Lewis and Clark started out, everybody thought it was gonna be way overpriced, that it would never be affordable. It's now 80% complete. We just passed the 30-year mark of when it became existent. We've not done building pipe line yet. We don't have every member connected yet. But Sioux Falls found that when they connected to, to Lewis and Clark, and they're in it for 17 million gallons a day, that they can buy Lewis and Clark water cheaper than they can make their own.
How many, how many systems are contemplated for Lewis and Clark when it gets completely done?
There's 20. 20 systems.
20 is all?
That's all.
Just for the record, I am a huge fan of this project. I know it's a long time coming. I think this is an excellent start. I know we're just Pennington County, and this went to all of western South Dakota, but, I mean, it's a good point that these go to campgrounds, because who visits our campgrounds? Our tourists. And all these people that come to the Black Hills, I mean, I just think this is an amazing opportunity to showcase West Dakota as part of this project and what we can do. I can't think of a better reason to spend Pennington County taxpayer money than something like this, for the record.
And Cheryl's also been working with getting, you know, the corporation established. You've hired an attorney now, so that's taking the next step. And that's, that's what has to happen, is the corporation has to be created.
Well, two things struck me on that. It was a good time to have that. You know, I think a lot of this could initially be done as a joint powers agreement, since we're largely dealing with governmental systems, without having to take the initial step of setting up a nonprofit, you know, corporation. State law already provides for that under joint powers. The other thing you might look at is, take a look at the model they did for railroads on a water development authority. It might require some authorizing legislation, but if you look at the railroad authority statutes, you could just plug in water for railroad, and it's a cooperative effort among counties, municipalities, that they put together to try and save some of the northern railroads up north. I think that might be, that might be a good way to go initially, before we start worrying about corporate structures and the rest of that.
And that was a discussion Cheryl and I had this afternoon, was, is that, how do you create an organization when you don't know who the members are? Because once the needs assessment are there, then they declare, you know, that they wanna be a part of the system, that's when they become the member.
Yeah.
And at this point in time, you have no members.
I think either of those would work, you know, to start out with. Who'd you hire for council?
Talbot was sorry, Goldrey.
Good. Any other questions?
If I can, a personal question. Are you David's brother?
Yes.
You look just like him.
And I was, that's why I got confused, because I didn't look like David. It's nice to meet you as well.
Yeah. It's a very close company.[1330.65][1330.65](Laughter).
I went to school with your brother.
Did you?
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, and some of you who were on the first stakeholder meeting that we had, David, who's now retired, did a history of Lewis and Clark for the group, so.
Any other questions? Dan?
I just wanted to mention that this afternoon, Dr. Chapman and I were on a conference call with a representative from Rowan's office, and one, Kasai Alhaj from Boone's office, discussing potential future funding, federal funding for BOR, and I think it went really well, so I applaud Banner for looking forward.
Great.
Great. Thank you, Cheryl.
They're not just, you know, they're looking well beyond this.
Any other questions? Well, appreciate you coming and giving us an update, and...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
We'll be in touch.
Thank you.
See, that was item seven. Item eight is hydrology conference funding request by the Conference Planning Committee. Dan, just call your names on that one.
Well, I guess my name's on it, because I've been serving on the, the planning committee charged with, you know, how do we make this thing work last year? The challenges were too, too large. This year, we're looking at a virtual meeting. West Dakota's been involved, I see in the write-up, since 2002. I would be pretty sure West Dakota would've been a sponsor back then. And Galen Hogestraub is here from USGS to tell us a little bit about it. I'll make a motion before we start, but what is this acronym CARA, Galen?
I can explain that through me for a little bit, too. So, yeah, I'm Galen Hogestraub, USGS, representing the, the Hydrology Conference Planning Committee. So, the South Dakota School of Mines is a partner organization for this committee, and they actually provide basically the accounting for running, running the conference. So, all the funds go into the School of Mines, formerly, so to your question, the CARA, Center for Alumni Relations Development, that used to be known as the Foundation.
Yeah. So it's on the paper.
It's on the paper there, so it's just the, the way that they want the checks written out, if, if we get to that point, but...
I guess so, to keep what, what should be probably proper protocol for us, we probably should have a motion on the table in a second before we enter in discussion, so I'll move that we move ahead with sponsorship this year. And this year, it's only $1,000. It's been half of our regular level, because everything's scaling back because of the virtual end of it. So anyhow, I'll move for $1,000 for sponsorship.
I second.
Okay, it's been moved, is there a second? And Wendy seconded, okay, so motion made and seconded. Any discretion on this item? Seeing none?
Is there a question?
Oh, okay, there's a question. That's good.
What's the money actually go for this year, since it's all virtual?
Since it's all virtual, it's administrative costs, so it covers some salary time for, for myself and others working on it. There, there may be some expenses related to buying a subscription for like the Zoom. You know, we have to get a certain amount of chairs, a certain amount of seats. We're kinda looking at possibly the biggest attendance we've ever had, just because going virtual, we're opening up a lot more people, so I think, I wouldn't be surprised if we get over 400 people signing up for this year. So that's, I mean, it's just kinda going towards that kinda stuff.
What's your, what's your conference budget?
Our, our conference budget on, on a typical year, so again, on a typical year, we hold this at the Civic Center, so they, they charge us some rent, catering costs is probably the biggest thing. Normally, what West Dakota's contribution actually is, is for it to sponsor the keynote speaker, the luncheon speaker, and it's kinda confusing for those that may be newer to this, there's a little write-up on the John T. Love's little biography there on the second page of this, but traditionally, that's been the West Dakota rule, is they're sponsored the luncheon speaker, so we bring in a keynote speaker, have to pay travel expenses, and sometimes honorary fees, things like that. So that's a little different this year, in that with the virtual conference, we don't really have a true keynote speaker, so it's all just administrative costs this year. So back to your original question, on a typical year, all those things add up to anywhere between kinda $15,000 or $20,000 each year to run, to run the campaign, so I kind of explained that's covered by sponsorships, registration fees, executive sponsorships, things like that.
So, I'm still, I'm just curious, you know, I'm not trying to be argumentative, but what's this year's budget?
You can tell he's a treasure.
I got that a lot more interested when I got that job.
Well, yeah. Well, that's somewhat, somewhat to be determined, but basically, the, I'll just say this, the time that I put in for organizing this is not enough, you know, the funds don't really cover what, what we get paid out of it. So, a lot of this is really just volunteer time by the sponsoring organizations, because, you know, we get benefit from just getting outreach time and getting some networking opportunities, so there's a benefit beyond, you know, the, the time and salary that we get paid to do this.
We used to get two free memberships, or registration, I should say.
Yeah, so this year's different, we're just, we're just gonna cover every, the entire board, we just get free membership this year.
Yeah, I wanted to point that out, because it's different than normal.
Sure.
So you don't really have a project budget, or conference budget?
Not, not, not for this year, it's, there's a, there's a, the School of Mines, formerly Foundation account, has a balance in it that we roll over each year, we use that to fund kind of some of the upfront costs, but we don't have a set amount that we're, that we can spend on it this year.
Do you have an estimate of how much the Zoom is going to cost?
That's kinda still to be determined. We're, we're working through some of those things right now.
Dan?
You, you mentioned here that West Dakota Water Development District will have the opportunity to provide a PowerPoint during breaks. Is that just something that cycles through that you...
My thought was, can we show, I found this on your website.
Okay.
So like, I don't know if you've attended other kind of virtual conferences, but during like the speaker transitions or breaks, they kinda have a slide that has like the logos of the sponsoring organizations. Well, I thought being, you know, since we're kind of one of the main sponsors, we show a poster like this, like maybe even just introduce it, and you have a chance to talk about it for a minute or two, as we go into a break or something like that. So I think that was, that was kinda my, my thought pattern, but for most of the other sponsors, it's like a hundred dollar fee, and they just get a logo put on for the break, and get some recognition in the, in the program.
That's cool.
I supposed to ask another question?
I supposed to ask another question?
Okay, ask away.
Who are the other main sponsors other than West Dakota, you know, being proposed?
West Dakota, okay, so West Dakota, then there's Respec has been a long-term kind of the next level down from West Dakota. They're always been the executive sponsor. And then we've got South Dakota School of Mines, obviously, DENR, Joanne's here from DENR, National Weather Service is the other, other organization, just to say.
Any other questions? Okay, motion is to fund a thousand dollars. So all in favor of the motion, saying aye?
Aye.
All the same sign. Thanks, Dan.
Thank you.
Okay, item number nine is next, USGS update on Canyon Lake water quality sampling effort. You back, you back up there again?
Also me, so putting on a different hat. Now I can wear my official USGS hat for this item. So quick background, Canyon Lake dredging, this is a project started, oh, probably 2016, 17, when we first started talking about this. And we did a first phase of this work, of the sampling work, 2017, 2018. As, the idea was we would collect some water quality information before, during, and after the dredging. Well, of course, there were some delays in the dredging process. And for one reason or another, we didn't quite get to do the after round of sampling until this year. So we had to come back and do a, the second phase project, which was funded a year or two ago. And then John's crew got done dredging this last December, Jan, January, a couple of months ago. And shortly thereafter, our plan was we're going to do four more rounds of, of sampling, you know, on Red Creek above, in the lake, and then Red Creek below the lake. So we got first round of sampling completed February 2nd, right before that cold snap hit. So we got one round, then we'll do another round probably next week, and basically do monthly sampling from here on out until, so probably looking at probably end of May, getting wrapped up for, for the sampling work. And I'll come back later this summer with the progress reports, kind of go over the, the findings, but.
Like at our July meeting, you think, because we have a meeting in May and then we have.
Probably July. Yep, that would make sense.
Chairman? I have the stupidest question tonight. I usually do.
We don't allow those.
Well, you have to because I'm on board.
Go ahead.
Um, okay. Well, first of all, does your wife, does your wife play volleyball? I'm sorry, I guess she's a really good volleyball player, I think, but anyway.
Yeah, maybe.
Yeah. That's not my question. What do we dredge for? What, what are we dredging for in Canyon Lake?
Removing the sediment.
Okay. And then what are we sampling for then?
Check the, how the, change the water, water quality in Canyon Lake by dredging it.
Is somebody using that water besides from, I mean, I like to kayak in there, but is somebody drinking? I mean, I know that's really stupid.
Drink, city, Rapid City, Rapid City water users?
Told you it was stupid. I didn't lie.
No, that was a good question.
Ever.
That was a good question.
I thought so.
No, that's, that's a very good question.
Okay, thank you so much.
Any other questions? That's seen none. Thanks, you know, for coming and giving us an update.
Thanks.
That was item nine. Item 10, funding request from the Game and Fish Parks for water craft inspection and decontamination stations. And Ron, you want to introduce Johnny?
Sure. John Carrero is here from Game and Fish tonight. He's a habitat biologist over there at, at the Game and Fish here at the Rapid City Regional Office. And I won't get into his, you know, presentation, but I think this is, it's kind of a water quality related item, only it's a little different than some of the water quality items we've talked about here in the past, you know, such as E. coli contamination or nutrient loading. This is, this is directly related to invasive biota in lakes in the Black Hills region. And specifically, you know, as you think about his presentation, and he'll probably highlight it, think about the lakes that we have in Pennington County, Sheridan, Pactola, and Deerfield.
Correct. Thanks, Ron, and Galen. Hopefully, water quality is not worse than when we started our dredging project there, so. Hopefully, we didn't ruin it. So, okay, yeah, this is a totally different thing. It's not a very fun thing to talk about. AIS, aquatic invasive species, something we've dealt with a long time. I mean, there's plants that are issues in lakes. There's silver carp in the Missouri River, big head carp. But none of them really caused problems like this does, as far as infrastructure goes. I mean, this is far above fisheries. So basically, what is AIS going to cover? What are the impacts? Kind of control measures that Game and Fish and Parks has done in the past, and a little bit about the program funding. But this is, is far reaching over than just water quality issues. So aquatic invasive species, basically organisms that basically, they're usually non-native, basically come in, they actually fill a niche in the environment and reproduce like crazy. And mainly what I'm going to be talking about are zebra mussels for the most part, which have been a, a big issue. And it's been a big issue in South Dakota in the last five, six years now. So zebra mussels, just a picture of them, if you're not familiar with them, very small. They're only about five to 10 millimeters. Most of them very small in size. Quaga mussels also, but not as much of a concern to us. Biggest thing with zebra mussels, unlike our native mussels, they actually have attachment points. So they adhere to rock surfaces and colonize highly. So when I talk about rocks, I mean, pipes for intakes for water treatment plants, dams, those sorts of things also. Just a little bit about the life cycle. Males and females, females can reproduce, produce about a million eggs a year, basically turn into a larval form called vellagers. They basically free flow for several weeks before they settle into the bottom and become adults. And from that point on, they just start colonizing. So came over from Europe originally, ended up in the Great Lakes through Ballast Waters, and has pretty much moved up large tributary systems, Mississippi, up to Missouri. So now in southeast South Dakota, we have numerous locations. First one was found in Lewis and Clark Lake in 2014. By 2017, 19, it's highly infested. And now, last year, pretty much Francis Case and Lake Sharp also. So it's moving up our system. So 2014, Lewis and Clark. Since then, and most of these were 2019 and 20. So Lake Sharp, Francis Case, McCook, Lake Yankton, Pickrell, Wabbe, North and South Rush, and Minawasta, most of them southeast part of the state. That's just kind of example of how big those are. That picture makes it look quite a bit larger. But this is what it can do. So it's far above fisheries, water intakes for city systems. They compete with native mussels, basically colonize right over them, can kill and wipe out other organisms. I just like this picture. It's kind of cool. I mean, really, that can take.
Is that Walmart or Target?
I don't know where that.
It's probably Walmart, Target's red.
It could be. It's hard to tell. There's no color showing anymore. But it's kind of a cool picture. But that can take 60 to 90 days, basically, in a highly infested system.
Wow.
So, yep, just kind of an example. So we have brand new PVC pipe, two months, four months, six months. So think of all the water intakes, I mean, dry water, irrigation, everything else involved with it. So, yeah, it's, it's a big deal. So mitigation. And this, this is in general, like the Great Lakes, they spend 500 million a year kind of take care of this stuff. Lewis and Clark, Ganspoint Dam, they spent millions on remodeling their system, basically, and still have to deal with issues. So that's when West Dakota has that water right. I mean, that's an issue with dealing with piping water over, handling that intake structure also. They've tried to eradicate them, hasn't worked, you know, so hopefully in the future, basically, something will come up to get rid of these mussels without destroying everything else. Just a boat prop. So this is what, if you put your boat in Lewis and Clark Lake for, you know, the summer season, it's going to look like this or much worse, basically, on it. So they've tried to take care of some lakes. This is kind of a cool example. So Christmas Lake in Minnesota, $6,800 to treat 7,500 cubic feet. Didn't work. If you extrapolate that to Lewis and Clark, it'd be $24 billion to try to treat Lewis and Clark, which would probably fail also. And then sharp objects, beaches get covered with them. I mean, it's not aesthetically pleasing. It's not good for tourism. So what have we done in the past? It's been a little bit weak. It's been education. I mean, that's what we're trying to do. Basically, a lot of states have spent tons of money trying to prevent the spread, and it eventually does keep spreading. The whole goal of what we try to do is outreach education. Now we're stepping up things a little bit more right now, fairly intensively this year. But, so like in Lewis and Clark, any place that has zebra mussels in it, it's basically a containment water. I mean, if you have your boat in there, it can be registered as long as that's the only lake you're going in and out of, that's fine. Otherwise, there has to be disinfections of the unit. Basically, if a boat is in the water for three days in an infested, infested water, there's a mandatory disinfection. Education outreach, our whole motto has been clean, drain, and dry. So the most important thing, these zebra mussels or the vellagers can survive and, you know, drops of water, you know, for a number of days. So it's important that everything's dried out. Boat plugs are pulled and drained. And then, like I said, now we're stepping up inspections a little bit greater. So the biggest thing I'm coming to you guys with this year is, we spent, you know, a couple hundred thousand dollars every year on this. And it's important, it is, but it also takes away from, you know, our typical staff time. We've put so many people towards AIS, our summer interns, that it's difficult for us to get some things done too, even though it's a very high priority for us. But the whole objective of the program is basically, we're not going to stop it. No one has really stopped the spread. But if we can slow it down until maybe there's a treatment, or maybe it takes, you know, five, 10 more years before things have to be modified and hundreds of thousands and millions of dollars have to be spent, or even for future designs with the city or any water infrastructure system, it may make sense to start designing those in there now than rather retrofitting it later. But our whole goal is to slow everything that's happening right now. So what we have right now, this year, Bureau of Reclamation has, they have a $300,000 grant that was given to us, or we're working with them, and that's going to cover all the BOR reservoirs. Basically, seven days a week, 10 hours a day. I mean, there's going to be people at the ramps checking basically every boat entering, looking for anything on the boat. If there's any sign of vegetation, zebra mussels, that boat will be disinfected and not allowed to enter the water until a full disinfection is done. You know, and that's mainly what we've done. We just haven't had this intensity of the project. So it should help quite a bit. So what it comes down to for Pennington County is, out of those BOR, BOR funds, $130,000 comes to Pennington County. So that'll cover 12 staff, 10 hours a day, seven days a week. The grant covers 86,000 of that. So GFP has 43,000. We're looking for other partners. I think this would be an ideal thing for West Dakota to be involved with. As far as education, be a great partnership. Next week, we have a meeting with the city and the Rapid City Water Users, which will approach them about funding this project also. So, yeah, it's a big deal, definitely for the future.
How much are you asking from Rapid City? Do you have a certain amount you're?
Uh, we don't have a goal. We're going to ask for 10,000 from West Dakota.
Okay, I see that.
In, in that case, from the city, whatever they can give us. I mean, they're a big stakeholder in this too, with Pactola Reservoir, the dam. How zebra mussels will impact that, that's a little different system. You know, I could see Sheridan, Deerfield. It's, it's hard to say how zebra mussels will impact our system when they get here.
And the 130 change, you're talking like the summer months?
Yeah. And the reason why we went to this model, this is, it's a little bit different because we were going to hire 24 interns, basically, to cover this the whole time. And with this grant, we kind of went to, Montana has a model where they went to the conservation districts. So we actually approached, approached the conservation districts to maintain these funds, actually hire the people so we could actually get, this is the first year, and it's starting a little bit later, but we'll have coverage from open water till September, October normally, rather than we have summer interns, it's like May to August, you know, when kids are gone for school, where, you know, the heavy fishing is early spring, late fall, plus all the recreation use in between.
Yep, understood. Thank you.
Is there a swipe or a test that they can do in conjunction with this at the same time for Diddymo?
Not really. I mean, Diddymo, it's going to be a microscopic search.
There's no kind of test that they.
No, and typically, Diddymo is more of a creek stream issue than typically a reservoir system.
Well, just Rapid Creek has a lot of it from Pactola.
Correct. Yeah, I mean, the high point is in the basin. And that's been studied highly. It comes down through Dark Canyon and everything. After Canyon Lake, it kind of disappears after that point. It hasn't been discovered, found down below typically.
What is that? Diddymo? Rock snout?
Yeah.
It's really nasty.
It's another invasive diatom. Basically exploded in Rapid Creek in certain parts of it, mainly right below the basin. It's more of a, associated with non.
I was, I, I guess I was wondering if there was a test.
Yeah, and that's, that's a good question. Invasive species, but not typically an issue in our lakes, more of a stream issue that we've had. And it has been, fortunately, fairly isolated. You know, we haven't seen a big spread of it.
What is the water quality impact of these things?
Actually, it's, you know, if you look at some of our eastern lakes, it's kind of good. It cleans things up. I mean, they filter, you know, like crazy. I mean, so they could end up actually improving slightly water quality of the lake. But I mean, it, it changes the whole dynamics of systems. I mean, you know, fisheries to beaches to.
We don't, they're not in the hills now?
No, no. The closest we have right now is Lake Sharp.
And how far up Lake Sharp, up to Pier or still?
It is, it is. That's a good question. I don't know exactly where it was. But I think it was actually close to Pier. So the funny thing is, I mean, we've sampled water, you know, for the vellager samples, I mean, you filter water. I mean, you drag, and then you send them off to labs, and they microscopically look through these samples, you know. And really, most of the time, it's basically, you have the adults, and that's it. You know, you don't really find the vellager samples. All of a sudden, the adults are there.
Was the governor approached about allocating any of the COVID impact funds for something like this?
That one didn't come up. She's been very supportive of, you know, some of the new laws and regulations. So when I talked about getting a little bit tougher, now law enforcement officers have the ability to pull people over, will have textations that can be random at any point, you know, making sure no one has water in their boats. No one has, actually, a big thing is, you know, you have to drain your live wells. You can't have water in them anymore. You have to basically, as dry as you can get everything. You can't take bait unless it's from water other than the lake, you know, away from it with you. So things have changed. They're, they're tough to enforce, but it's.
Is there any state funding in this other than Game and Fish funds?
Uh, no, not currently.
Most of those are what? Fishing license revenues and things like that?
Yep. Yeah, you know, and it kind of fell on us because we are the ones that work on the waters, you know, we're kind of tasked with this.
What's the problem with Sheridan Lake that it's not covered in this?
It's not a Bureau of Reclamation reservoir, but it's still a big one. It gets a lot of usage. So that's why we include it in there, of course. Yep.
Has the tourism industry been approached?
Uh, no, not yet. Uh, no, not yet.
You're going to? You said this is mostly infrastructure and tourism impact, recreation impact.
Well, it is from the boater aspect. I mean, I could imagine like Lewis and Clark Lake, I mean, that's going to impact people putting boats in there. Anytime you have it, I mean, there's a concern. If you have your boat in there more than several days, you have a chance of spreading it somewhere else.
Final question off topic, when are you going to get the Northerns out of Lakota Lake?
Well, we actually put them in there.
Why? You destroyed the damn place.
That's very interesting. Um, no, that's a good question too. Um, the reason why we did that is was, it was, before it was dredged and drained and everything. It was actually very popular, and that's why a lot of people went to Lakota.
Yeah, I didn't go there to catch Northerns. I don't go there at all now.
No, I was there actually twice this winter, and all I caught were really big trout and some really big perch too, so.
Are you done with your presentation, John?
Oh, yeah.
I'm just looking at the little left bar there. We didn't miss-
Yeah, sorry, I went to that. Yeah, that was it. Sorry. Kind of hopped, hopped around, but yes.
I see the quagga mussels in Angostura.
Yeah.
But you said it's not as big a problem or not a problem?
Well, and, you know, they're similar in structure, but quagas, they occupy a different niche in the system. They generally adhere to soft structure, which is more mobile. They don't colonize like the zebra mussels do and cause problems on pipes and-
And a question on the stations. If they need to be disinfected, is there a charge for the boater for them?
No, no, there is no charge. And we actually, I forgot to mention that. Like, we actually supply all the training, law enforcement, um, to the staff that will be out there, and we actually purchased all the uh, spray units, transportable spray units for those. So I mean, to do a disinfection, it basically has to be, you know, high-pressure spray over a hundred and forty degrees, you know, for a certain period of time.
I have a question, John.
Yep.
How many stations are you going to have, say like at Pactola and Deerfield?
Okay, on every lake, I mean, every entrance will be covered. So there's basically nowhere you can go to a boat ramp without coming across one of the inspection sites. So Angostura is going to have three or four crews, you know, six to eight people every day at all the different points. You can cover like three ramps, you know, from one section, two from another, and then on the south side towards Chef's Canyon too. So basically, there's no way into a lake without it being covered.
How many stations would like to be at Pactola?
There'll be two stations, both ramps.
And then that Deerfield?
Uh, there will be two stations there also. Yep. Yep. And Shade Hill also, that'll be covered as well.
You said they won't be set up until the seasonals are able to come in late May?
Yeah, and what happened, normally when we have our interns doing it, that we train, um, they're usually done at school mid-May. So they start then, and they're, they're till mid-August before they go back to school. So this new structure with the, um, how we're doing it this year started a little bit later than anticipated. But if we continue to do this, like this is a one-year grant from Bureau of Rec, um, hopefully, we develop more and more partners each year, and we'll be able to hire, you know, seasonal staff, non-students to actually start earlier and work later through the whole time, to cover, cover a longer period of time.
So John and Jake, um, approached me, uh, in terms of being the board sponsor on this. And one of the reasons I thought it was a good idea was is that, number one, we don't have, you know, these mussels in any of the lakes in the region. There's a lot of, uh, you know, intermixed boat traffic, you know, in the region between a user at Sheridan and a user at Pactola, a user at Deerfield. I mean, I take my boat all over the place. You know, sometimes unfortunately, it dries out between uses because they don't get to use it as much as they want to. However, there's a lot of people that are not in that category. So there's boats going all over the place in the hills. We don't have these critters yet, and so, um, I thought it was a, a pretty good idea to try and at least slow them down, like John said, for a period of time through this intensive inspection and decon- and decontamination. Um, it kind of directly related to our, you know, mission in terms of water quality, um, because it's a biotic invader and related to water quality. And so I was pretty supportive of the idea, and we'll follow along with a motion to approve a request for ten thousand dollars as a partner organization with, with Game and Fish.
Yeah, kind of one more comment, and that was a good point about users bumping from lake to lake. But we have users that go from Missouri River and back to Angostura, I mean, in a day. People, they drive and go, so.
That was your motion, right?
My motion, yep. So that's my motion, is to approve a request for ten thousand as a partner to Game and Fish.
Okay, is there a second?
Second by Linda. Discussion on the motion.
Yeah, I'm going to have to vote against this. I don't see how this fits in with our mission at all. And in fact, as our presentation just told us, it actually fits better to have these things as far as improving water quality, you know, than to keep them out of the lake. I don't see that this is something that is within the parameters of our responsibility whatsoever. I think it would be irresponsible to fund something like this. Although we have the money, it would be a very easy vote. Um, I just don't see that it meets our, our statutory authorization.
Just a comment from my perspective as a fisheries biologist. Um, these aquatic invasives are, um, you know, very problematic from many perspectives. So, uh, they're, one of the perspectives, you know, from the, uh, the invasive species perspect- to the idea is that, you know, we, um, we, uh, we don't have these here now. And so it'd be very desirable to, uh, increase the intensity of efforts to keep them out of here. If they were to ever colonize, um, the lakes in Pennington County in particular, uh, in the Deerfield-Pactola system, uh, those are really directly related to, you know, downstream supply of municipal and irrigation water, which our users, I think, are, are pretty interested in, you know, keeping flowing. Uh, if you have a chance sometime, uh, and you're driving up the interstate, drive off at, um, I think it's a stage bar and exit and drive into Black Hawk Marine. And take a look at one of the objects they have in there that's colonized with zebra mussels. It's, um, pretty amazing to see. And I guess I would take, uh, I would respectfully disagree with you on the fact that it is directly related to, uh, water quality in the preclusion of, of a, of an, uh, uh, of an invasive species not native to our region, um, to the Black Hills, you know, area.
Tell me how it is. I've heard no evidence that, that says it's going to decrease our water quality. The evidence I've heard tonight was that if anything, it would improve water quality.
As a biotic invader, it decreases, you know, the usability of these areas for, um, either infrastructure that services municipal water, irrigation water, or users of the water as the beaches become, uh, colonized with sharp-shelled, um, little critters.
I don't disagree with that, but you haven't convinced me that it's something within our legitimate purview. Is the boater getting this information? Do they get it when they get their license or?
Yep, they do. I mean, it's heavily advertised, and we've been pushing it for years.
Yeah, okay.
And, you know, I was taking light of the fact that they can improve water quality. There's so many negatives associated with that.
One of the things that goes along with the water quality in quotes improvement in areas where the lakes are eutrophic and there is an abundance of, of nutrients and phytoplankton, um, there can be a, you know, that feeling that, you know, these things are filtering high volumes of water and thus eating those primary producers, and the water clears. The difference in the lakes that we have here is they are not eutrophic. You know, they are relatively nutrient poor in terms of their, you know, overall status in a eutrophic scale like Deerfield and Pactola. Um, one of the things that promotes the growth of Diddymo below Pactola is nutrient-poor water. So we have nutrient-poor water or nutrient-reduced water in particularly Pactola and Deerfield. So reducing primary production through the filter feeding of the zebra mussels could in fact have a deleterious effect on the productivity that we see in those two reservoirs for, you know, particularly the sport, sport fishes.
I can speak as a boat owner. We've been pulling the plug on our boat, like our live well, for like three years now, at least. That's like a standard thing because of that very thing, so.
Do you have a comment?
Yeah, I think that trying to help maintain the biological integrity of our, her waters does fit within our mission. I think, you know, it's kind of a good neighbor thing to do. You know, I'm supportive of it, but I guess just kind of a general question for you, John. I'm kind of looking at the inevitability of, of this thing, and I, you know, I'd be pretty sure five years from now, you're going to be telling us what is it we're trying to do about it. I mean, is, is mitigation likely to turn into much, you know, are there ways to mitigate? Will that be a bigger question here pretty soon? I mean, it, uh, just looks to me like it's inevitable.
Um, the way it's going, I mean, but it has slowed the spread across the whole country. I mean, because this has been an issue that people have dealt with. I mean, you know, and when you're talking biological integrity, yeah, huge issues. But, you know, I come to you guys from more of the infrastructure type of deal. Dam functioning, um, irrigation intakes, city water intakes, I mean, those are pretty big impacts. I mean, to Pennington County, um, in addition to collapses you can have in fisheries and everything else. So, I mean, that's where I was coming from for you guys, so.
Dan.
Are, are there studies that quantify the effectiveness of what you're suggesting? Like, does it slow it down by half or?
That's a good question. I don't have a good number for you, but, um, you know, for instance, over the last few years that we have been doing these more limited disinfections, there's been about two and a half to three percent of boats that we actually did find something on and did decontaminate, whether it was plants or, um, mussels, um, at that point. So I know there's, over at Balfour, there were mussels found on a boat. Um, but most of what we have identified so far, you know, we're looking for zebra mussels, but we cover everything. I mean, if there's anything on that boat or trailer, we decontaminate it. Um, so as far as a good hard number, no, I don't have a, a value. There's probably some published results. I don't have them on hand right now.
Do you know if our counterparts east of our other development districts participate in your program with funding assistance?
Um, no, not currently. Um, yeah, there have been some cooperative efforts, especially when it first started in Lewis and Clark. I mean, that was a big deal. Um, then as it kept spreading to some of the other lakes, some of the other ones are newer. But I mean, the emphasis really in the last year, two years, has really stepped up with the advent of some further spread up to Missouri.
One of the things about Pa- Pactola Reservoir, you know, the original design for their belving, there's a, they have gate valves in there and you have cavitation problems. And then when you get to the litter flows, reduce the litter flows and maintain a stream flow in Rapid Creek below Pactola, that's a, that's a small pipe.
Yep, yep.
And if that, if that got plugged up, it would definitely affect the amount of water that they could release in the litter time flows.
Correct, and that, that's really where it's coming from, you know, from this talk. I mean, because, um, yeah, it's made changes to, to fisheries and everything, and beaches and boating and everything. But I mean, the bigger issue is water supply, really.
Yeah.
That's where the money is. I mean, that's where the millions of dollars have been spent on retrofitting and fixing. So I don't know, why not prevent it, you know, at least delay it, is from my standpoint.
Any more questions? Go ahead.
I think it was 2017, I went to Wyoming, and at one of their I-90 rest areas, they had a mandatory boat inspection.
Correct.
Um, are you aware of, do they have problems already in Wyoming, or are, are they being very preventative?
They're being very preventative. Um, their program, I mean, basically, if you come into Wyoming with a boat, you have to have it inspected before it can enter a water. Um, and you have to have a stamp on your boat designating that. Um, and that's kind of where we're trying to get, covering our large reservoirs, the biggest risk, so.
I was just going to comment on the other water development districts. I was talking to Jay Gilbertson today about this, he was interested. He said, I wonder why they're going to you guys first, and I, I told him, that's probably because you're already screwed, you know?
Well, no, that, that is a big reason. I mean, the, the east has a disadvantage. There's so many lakes that you can get to and hop from in an hour. You could be at another lake and fish, and it happens all the time.
They actually have their own steam cleaner, cleaner, he said.
Yeah, yeah. So yeah, our motto is the, the rests of the west. That's what we're trying to say right now, so.
Any more questions? It's like we're ready to vote on it. If we're on a ten thousand dollars for the game fishing parks for, for this program, uh, all in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign.
Aye.
One no. Scott, what motion carries? Thanks, John, for coming. Pretty informative.
Much.
Let's see, that was item team. Item eleven is an update on potentially erosion control projects in Rapid City area. Information only. Dan?
Okay, um, Dan Malali had handed out to everybody, uh, basically a one-page document that's a, a draft of a proposal that, that I've been working on with the city rec department to, to do a, an erosion control revegetation project in the La Croix Link. Uh, used to be golf course, now disc golf. They've got about a two-acre area there that's a pretty rough shape and a, a good place to conduct a pilot project. Um, you know, front page is kind of a description, and the back page shows the area. I'd shown that in some slides there, uh, you know, at a previous meeting. And the intent is not to take any action on this. This, I really wanted to bring it up for, for discussion, and then an update on a few other things that are kind of in the works. So I'll, I'll move on to those other things that are in the works first and then come back. I'd like to, you know, be able to get thoughts from directors on, you know, as, as, as far as how this proposal, um, you know, if it, if it might fit right for us. But, uh, the other main things that, that are really in the works, uh, there's, you know, um, several of the other directors that I'd mentioned in the, uh, the previous meeting. Um, the Stevens High School and National Guard Camp shooting range, uh, out there, there's, there's a great deal of, you know, exposed spearfish formation, red shales. Uh, whether it's red shale or black shale, uh, the effect is the same. They're on steep slopes, very erosive, and in, in many cases, just going straight down the gutter, the storm sewer, straight into Rapid Creek. And, um, you know, we, there's been a lot of work done studying these suspended sediments. And, you know, I've come to the conclusion, why don't we try to fix them? You know, so anyhow, uh, the, the Rapid City school system, um, you know, they are very interested, as is the, the National Guard. We, we've got a, uh, I'll be talking more with, with them in the, the upcoming weeks. You know, I expect that in May, I'll be able to have a full proposal for the rec department. You know, before we can move ahead with them, they have to be, basically be reviewed by, uh, you know, their attorney and, and actually have to be approved by their, uh, or they've got a Parks and Rec Board of sorts. So, you know, they have to have some internal approvals there. And, um, I would expect that we'd probably be able to move forward with the proposal, you know, for the, you know, the, the Stevens and Guard Camp area also. And, and that one also includes, uh, right-of-way, city right-of-way, which will be, um, within the Public Works Department. And I'm not sure exactly what the deal is, and I doubt if you would know, Gary, but there's, there's actually a chunk of the National Guard Camp out there that's listed. It's kind of like co-owned by Pennington County. You know, I, I don't know what the deal is. I, I kind of heard it mentioned before. It, uh, so anyhow, if it happens to be county, well, we're kind of the, the branch of the county that would deal with things like that. So we won't come and, you know, ask the commissioners for more money. But it, uh, you know, it looks like a, you know, a real good opportunity for, for a lot of collaboration. Um, also in discussion with a couple of landowners in the Star Village area. And, you know, that would kind of get us delving into what we might, we do in places where we've got some- some, some private ownership involved. So, so I expect that, that there's a lot of interest here and I expect to have some firm proposals coming up. But the, the reason I wanted to, to get the, the handout to people ahead of time is where you'd have a chance to, to give it a little read through and, you know, maybe we could just have a little bit of an open discussion on, you know, are there improvements that we might need to a proposal like this? You know, I hate to come along two weeks later and say, well, we should have done, or two months later, and we should have done it this way, or we should have done it that way. So, I'd kind of like to get some input now. And I guess, you know, to me, one of the, the specific areas that could be discussed, it's a little bit non-standard in that rather than saying, we're going to have a specific budget of, of X amount, you know, the way I proposing this one, and basically, it's being proposed as a collaborative effort between them and us. You know, they're not coming to us asking for money, we're just saying, let's, let's work together on this. And, you know, it's a pretty short proposal. You know, my contact there has been Scott Anderson. He seemed to think it's adequate and, you know, kind of pending legal approval, but try to keep it as simple as possible was the concept. But, you know, the way it's laid out was that we would contribute a, a maximum of $25,000 to buy whatever it is that we might need. The Parks Department would not contribute any hard cash, but they're actually in a position to, you know, contribute a lot in kind. You know, he thinks they will be able, we're going to need compost and topsoil. He says they've got quite a source of topsoil out there. Is it Fitzgerald, the name of the stadium they've been rebuilding? You know, they've got a lot of topsoil there and the, the compost can come from the landfill if the, if the herbicide issues have been gone, you know, dealt with by then. And, you know, they should be able to help transport it. They've got a, you know, basically a, a skid steer that's on tracks to where they could help move material up the slope and whatnot. And so, so it's a, a little bit different way of approaching things. And I think, you know, I'm pretty optimistic that we can probably do that piece of land for maybe half that amount. But, you know, I've not wanted to spend my time trying to figure out, you know, how many square yards or what kind of geofabric do we need to tie it down and what sort of stakes and how much is the grass seed? You know, I've had a couple of people that are telling me, well, that ought to be, you know, a great plenty of money. So, I kind of wanted to throw it up for discussion, you know, is, is this the right way of, of proposing this or are there concerns with things like that?
Okay. Any questions, comments?
I, I have some comments. I think this is a great idea. The couple of things that I have on this, just what little I know about it, is who would monitor how much money? So, we say a maximum of 25. I don't have a problem with the approach at all because I get that we don't know how much it would cost total. But I guess one of the things that I would think of right away is who would monitor how much money West, West Dakota would spend? It talks down here evaluating the effectiveness of various treatment methods, which I think is an excellent idea, but who would do that? I mean, is that something that we know about already, Dan, or?
Well, a, a couple of things. As far as evaluating, this will give us an opportunity to evaluate how well will it work, what we do there work compared to, to other places. School mines, you know, we've already got one in place there and they're going to do, they're going to do several different tests. So, I mean, right now, all of these things, these are very challenging settings. I mean, we're picking this really steep and, and, and how can we do it cost effectively without, you know, grotesquely, I'll use the term over-engineering, although this is really landscaping as opposed to engineering. But in terms of the tracking, you know, I guess part of why I wanted to get it on the table here, that would fault our admin guy. You know, I guess the way it's written up is that, that we will be responsible for procuring. So, Dan, is it a difficulty? You know, I guess I would find myself probably working with, you know, Scott Anderson, what is it we're going to buy? He kind of knows what are the right sort of things we might try and, okay, how many rolls of, of what sort of geofabrics and et cetera, et cetera? And can we basically track that within an account that's set up for this particular project then? Let's say, you know, we need $3,000 worth of geofabric and $1,000 worth of stakes and $3,000 worth of grass seed and blah, blah, blah.
And is that something that they would get bids for?
I don't think we would probably be bidding that. I think, you know, we'd probably shop around and say...
Or just making sure that they shop around for the best.
Well, actually, it says that we would do the procurement on it.
Okay.
We, you know...
Sure, okay, I did see that.
Right. Basically streamline it. You know, one of the things that I've kind of figured out, I mean, these places have been the way they have been for, for years and they're not getting fixed. You know, if you tell them, well, you got to invest in, you know, buying this, I mean, all, it won't happen, you know? So, I've kind of put the burden on, on ourselves and, you know, I can see that I've kind of created a retirement job for myself to chase some of this stuff around. But, you know, I, I guess to me, you know, I think this level of procurement, but that's a good question. I mean, do we, you know, I've kind of been concerned with our Missouri River project that we had not put that out for bids. And I guess my perspective is if we can do that without bidding, we can buy geofabrics without bidding.
Fair enough.
Probably by a chair.
I guess, I don't think it's a bad idea either to start working on some of these areas that contribute, you know, sediment either directly or indirectly to the stream. I think it would be important in a formal proposal that the board, the board would act on though, to take advantage of the gentleman you talked about, Scott. We got 1.2 acres of area that we're going to treat here. I think it's, I think there should be some effort made to generate a, a project budget for that 1.2 acres. And then we could get closer to where we really thought the money was going to be. 25 grand for an acre is a lot of treatment. I mean, you take the dirt away and put new in.
Well, it's, it's not a matter of, but...
You kind of picked a number, didn't you?
Well, well, the reason I go with the 25,000 is that is, is the limit that we can expend with one, one vote. And, and, I mean, I, I really, the, and, and probably people didn't have time to read it ahead of time, but that's why I wanted to get it up for discussion, is the, the way it's written is that if, if the costs are going to add up to more than 25,000, we would scale it back to where we didn't, we wouldn't necessarily do the whole thing, you know? And then we'd be able to say after the fact, well, it costs this much for the geofabrics, this much for the seed, this much for such and such. And the intent really is that as we would progress, we would have a much better idea on, on what will it cost in approximate ballparks to tackle these things.
I, I understand what you're saying, you know? I don't want to be unsupportive, but I think that if Scott and you have an idea of what you're going to do, that some kind of rudimentary project budget would be able to be constructed for the kind of treatments for the kind of areas.
I could try to zero in a little bit on that.
Yeah, I think it would be important to have that, from my perspective.
One thing, you didn't mention the Scott Anderson, Roger DeCock is on the Park and Rec Board. I don't know if you know Roger, he's a friend of mine and he, he asked him about it today because they're going to bring it up, they have a meeting Thursday, the Park and Rec and this, this project, potential project is on their agenda too. So, it's got, it's got to go through some approvals before it gets through us for a final vote, I think. You're probably looking at this, our May, May meeting.
Yeah.
Tom?
So, a couple of concerns. I want to reiterate Ron's concern about the budget. I would like to see an actual structure, even in its ballpark, just to see, is there any way, since we paid, we're paying minds to do their study, can they send like an undergrad to possibly do a test case with, with what you guys, what's happening with the city plot to maybe compare numbers? Or is that something that we would have to have an individual engineer to find that information? If I make sense.
Good, good question. I was actually, you know, on a Zoom call with, with Dr. Brett Lingwall and Heidi Seiberting is, and, and I raised that very question and I said, I let them know we've got some of these projects on the drawing boards and, you know, I'm just asking if, if they would see an opportunity that they could weave it into some sort of a broader research program. And they said that they didn't really think so, you know? I think from, from our standpoint, to do formal monitoring, I don't think the benefit cost ratio would, would pan out. I mean, I think we'll have a pretty good idea, you know, maybe we could get, I'm going to ask kind of for help, maybe we could get the director to volunteer to be kind of like the monitoring guru and take a few photos. I mean, we might try some of this and some, some that. The big test is going to be how well does the things germinate and, and what is, what does it look like a few years later?
One more follow-up. Have we talked to the Pennington County Conservation District? Because I've assumed so erosion is one of their big things. Well, I know you have the letter for 11A, but I just, something came into my mind right now that I thought I would bring up.
They do not have a mechanism that allows them to work within town. But, but actually, I talked with, you know, Lindsay Maders, their administrator. We can purchase materials from them, you know, different types of vegetation, grass seed, things like that. And so, we're in contact with them.
Okay.
One, one of the other aspects that kind of bears discussion, I will be on a, a call with the Black Hills Supply Fishers Thursday evening, asking them if they can, I don't know that they can commit, at least not right away, but, you know, if they can take their membership to help provide volunteer labor, you know, the, there would be a limit to how many of these things could we bite off over time? You know, out at the guard camp, I think there's some likelihood that, you know, they can actually contribute, help, you know, summer camp, things like that, it sounded like. That'll remain to be, to be seen. So, in talking with Scott Anderson, he's, I said, well, how about the liability issue? And he says they've actually got a, you know, a volunteer waiver that people can sign, you know, when they have volunteers, whether that's, I don't know if that's planting petunias in city gardens or not, maybe a little different. He says they can help us with that end of it, you know, not necessarily a trivial thing, but...
So, a bit more, more information at the May meeting?
Well, I'll have a formal proposal.
And probably more detail.
Well, we'll, I'll, I'll have some sort of a, of a ballpark budget, you know? I'm pretty sure it won't be a detailed budget because we don't know exactly what it is we'll be putting down. But where we know what we're, where we know what we're planning for on that one, I mean, we would, you know, he will soon, he will soon know if he's got approval from, you know, his board and, and from legal and, and I can put together at least enough of a budget to, you know, satisfy director's concerns there and bring it to our vote, you know?
I was kind of thinking that, you know, they've got an engineering staff, the city. I mean, you might need some, something with detail. I mean, if we're going to build something, engineers need details.
Well, mostly we need to know what kind of geofabric do we buy and, and how many square yards of it. I've got enough of the, the background that, you know, I can come up with some of that, but...
Anyway, we'll bring it up at the next meeting.
Yeah, you, you were asking me...
Yeah, absolutely.
...tracking the project. I guess I need to understand it better. It looks somewhat, Rapid City Parks give me like a shopping list of...
Well, I, I will work with them to develop that and, and I'll have figured out where are the places that we buy this stuff. They talk about a couple of different vendors that they tend to go to and so...
And one of those vendors might be Pennington Conservation?
That could be one of them. But, you know, I guess to me...
So, we would basically just, it would be drop shipped or whatever?
Well, we're...
It would come to us directly if we deliver it?
Well, right, we might have it delivered out there. I mean, you know, this, a lot of this stuff, it's kind of bulky and, I mean, it really helps having guys like him involved. I mean, we've kind of got a plan for how do we have staging areas to bring in compost and topsoil and, you know, there's a lot of logistics involved, but, but if I bring you...
There's not going to be any cost for topsoil or, they're, they're going to haul that too.
That, that's, that's what we expect.
Yeah.
Right now, I mean, there, that wasn't a given when I talked to him some time ago, but right now, they happen to have that big pile out there at Fitzgerald Stadium.
They do, yeah.
So, you know, that may be different when we go to some of these other areas, you know?
Well, they make their own compost too, right there at their shop.
Right.
Could use that too, because they, they have some problems out there at the landfill.
Sure. But anyhow, if, if we've got figured out what it is that we'll need to buy, it isn't a difficulty to keep track of how much we spend on this project.
Probably not, we'll just set up a spreadsheet or something like that.
Yeah.
Well, the city may have quotes too. They get quotes for about everything they do and through, through a legal process, they may have quotes for seed, they may have quotes for, you know, whatever product we might need, they may have...
I, I don't know that I'd be the best guy to find the cheapest supplier.
Well, Will, I, I kind of figured, I mean, this is part of our learning curve, but, you know, I really see that as something that somebody should have that pretty well lined up by the time we come to you with it. You can write the check and...
Interesting, yeah.
Plug it into a spreadsheet.
Well, more detail, precise detail at the next meeting.
Not necessarily a lot more, but I'll have more.
That's kind of bold.
Well, I, I, I see the, I see the proposal as simple as this unless people have specific comments on it to, to provide ahead of time. You know, I mean, I want to have a proposal that we can vote on and, you know, Scott Anderson, he said, no, no changes, this works fine for him. If we need to have, you know, changes in this, it needs to be woven in, you know, before we would, before we would vote on it. But, you know, I will, you know, I will come along with, you know, some estimate of what kind of materials, how much and what the costs will be. I mean, the, by the, by the, the, the next step is actually to go from the conceptual stage to, to planning it out. And at some point in time, I mean, we, that has to come next. So, you know, I will, I will take the leap. I mean, I don't, I don't want to go through this process as an exercise and then everybody says, well, I vote no. And I'll say, oh crap, that didn't work out. Anyhow, I mean, I, my sense is there's enough support for this that, I mean, that will be the next step and let's figure out exactly how much of what we will need to buy.
Fair enough.
Just one more kind of comment for improvement of the, of the deal is in, and it kind of comes along with it, I guess. If you're going to figure out the materials and the, the types of things that you need, you're going to have a site plan for these 1.2 acres, what you're going to do on there that we can react to or understand, right?
You mean a written up site plan?
It's a layout you're talking about, wasn't it?
Well, I guess you got a 200 by, an eight by 208 foot area, basically, you're going to work on. So, a site plan on what we're going to deal, do there for the material use, no?
Basically, we developed a site plan in talking there, I guess it was Wednesday of, Thursday of last week, we were there. And basically, we would start on this site and work towards that site because of the logistics involved, the, you know, the, the rec, the two acre rectangle, you know, it's a smaller fraction, it's, it's probably quite a bit less than 1.2 acres that's actually needs to be treated. But, you know, measuring it exactly, I need, I mean, I need to go out there with a, a tape measure and, and take some measurements, that will be next. But, you know, in terms of a, a site plan, you know, I guess the plan was that, you know, he'll have to wait and see if he actually can get use of the Bobcat and, and then it kind of gets down to having some people and, you know, we, we've got a pretty good plan that you have to start on the bottom on one side and work your way up to the top and then you move over to the next one. So, if it would help to have that written up into, you know, I could do that. But, you know, in terms of, I guess it had not occurred to me that, you know, we would need a written plan. But, I'll have, you know, another kind of aspect of it that I was going to bring up is it could help to have a couple of people, you know, that could be like a committee to help with it. to help with this. And if there were volunteers that were familiar with creation of site plans, you know, that would be a very useful contribution.
Well, right, they do have an engineering department with Keith, Keith Johnson. That's what he did.
Well, we, I can check with Scott what his thoughts are, but like I say-
I think he still works part-time for, for those guys and he could whip something up real quick. No one-
Dan, I was just wondering, who is going to decide what the appropriate, say, grass seed is going to be?
It would be-
Does Scott have that background or?
Yeah.
Yeah, he does. Yeah, we, we're going to have to go by what, what they recommend for, you know, how much, you know, two inches of topsoil and two inches of mulch or whatever. And then so many pounds of seed per acre or whatever. We don't have anybody that has that expertise. I don't.
That might answer my question because I see collaborative project, which makes me wonder who's in charge, who makes the decisions. And if it's not working, is there a way out? And are we going to have milestones so that we kind of ensure that we're on a path to success here? So, just concerns to think about.
I'll reread this thing, um, which I'm kind of trying to do quickly now. But I thought maybe I'd said something that we would, you know, basically mutual consensus sort of thing. And if it's not there, I'll, I'll weave it in. I mean, that's, that's really what I had envisioned was that, you know, we would work together and say, what do we consider most appropriate on this? And I really, I'm not in the, uh, the business. You know, I need to rely on people like him to have more expertise, so.
Yeah, I would agree with that. I mean, he does that day in and day out, so.
Yeah, I mean, that's one of the things where we really gain from this is we, you know, gain from their experience.
Exactly. Well, we'll bring something back to the, for the board to consider at the next meeting. Uh, put in 11A there, that letter of support for the, um, grant money that, uh, the Pennington County Conservation District on the CIS Rapid Creek Restoration Project, that they're trying to get some grant money for.
So, you've got a handout on that one. The background is that on Thursday, Dan Birkey and I attended this meeting of the Pennington Conservation District. And they were hoping that we could provide a, a letter of support, uh, for their proposal to the NRCS, Natural Resource Conservation Service. It's what's called their CIS program and, and that is the Conservation Implementation Strategy Program. I guess I should pause here and kind of, um, mention, it's unfortunate. They had hoped to be able to attend. They're pretty short-staffed. A lot of their people, their calving time of year and whatnot. And their administrator, Lindsey Mater, ended up with a broken-down vehicle and not able to get here. And normally, Ken Steichen, who's on the board, will attend. And I couldn't get a hold of him today. So, I'm stopped throwing it at you. But, uh, basically, the intent is that the project area will be from Rapid City downstream, uh, to the mouth of the Cheyenne. And basically, you know, I don't know all the details, but, you know, exactly how the program will work. But, but, you know, they will be looking to work with different producers to, to implement the, the various conservation measures that are listed here. Uh, and that's not necessarily a fully inclusive list. And so, I'd iterated a time or two with Lindsey to try to get the wording towards adequate. And, uh, probably the most important wording is the, is the last two sentences that West Dakota encourages and supports. And West Dakota may be able to provide some level of future funding support contingent on approval on, you know, site-by-site, uh, requests. So, I was pretty comfortable going at it from that direction. And so, I'll make a motion that we proceed with this letter of support.
All right. Motion is made. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by town. Discussion with the board members. Any, any questions? Seeing none? All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All saying aye. Motion carries. Thank you. That moves us to number 12. Proposal to change-
Dan, can we take a little break?
Yeah, we can take a break.
Mr., uh, she's in, the chairman?
No, Dan, no, Dan's fine. At least you didn't call me Dan. The only time I, my mom called me, that was when she was mad at me.
Oh, okay. I'm not mad at you.
All right, we'll take a 10-minute break.